I'm calling a meeting to order. Start with Mr. Steve Bullock, Public Works Director.
So we put a bid out for a new HVAC preventative maintenance contract since the previous company I didn't feel was doing a very good job and it was multiple department heads that felt the same way. So we put out a new bid. We sent it to 14 companies. Two companies followed the sealed bid guidelines. Another company emailed me their sealed bid, so I rejected it. So out of the two that we got, we had Dowling and then Thermodynamics Incorporated. Dowling was the low bidder, but after doing my research and calling the references that they provided, I'd be more comfortable going with Thermodynamics Inc. I only got one person to tell me Dowling was good, and that was the Town of Stratum. But I did more research and the Select Board Chair in Stratum almost Dowling Incorporated, so it's kind of, I didn't feel like I was going to get a very honest review. I called the former Public Works Director and he told me that they'll come in low and do charge orders after and boost the price and told me that I'd be better off with somebody else. So Thermodynamics Inc., I called Poland Springs in Maine and they're extremely fond of them. And then the VA Hospital in Brockton, Mass has used them for 14 years and they don't have anything bad to say about them. So I would be more comfortable entering into the agreement with TEI instead of Dowling.
Are they the people that came to help us now?
Nope, they didn't put in a bid.
Oh, that company? Okay.
I had called them to ask why they didn't put in a bid. They never got the email that was sent, so I don't.
Hmm, okay.
Did you?
No, I think that makes sense.
Okay, in that case, I'm going to move to grant the Public Works Director authority to enter into a contract with Thermodynamics Inc. as recommended and presented. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Selectman Bubbe?
Yes.
Select person Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes, motion passes. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Steve. So, motion to enter into non-public session per New Hampshire RSA 91 hyphen A colon three, Roman numeral two, lowercase a and b and l. Roll call vote required.
Second.
Selectman Bubbe?
Yes.
Select person Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes. Motion passes.
Just for you. Hold the minutes for me.
Oh, move to seal the minutes?
No, easy back, easy back.
Roll call.
Move to seal the minutes?
Second.
Do you want a roll call?
Roll call vote. Select, Selectman Bubbe?
Yes.
Select person Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes. Motion passes. I'm looking for something.
What are you looking for? Do you need a pen or a pen?
I'm looking for something for that lady.
Uh-oh.
Don't worry about it, Carrie. We can do it after.
Sustainability is ready.
Oh, you're so sick.
Oh.
No, I'm only 50%. I couldn't find you.
I didn't think of that. Go ahead, go ahead. I just need one of your functions. Can you find out about Friday night?
Well, I don't know. I do. I'm going to wait until Friday night to see the lady that does that.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
That sounds good. Thank you. I'll probably go anyway.
Okay. Are you going to go there Friday night?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm sure it won't be a problem.
She never minds. She won't mind.
You're probably already on.
What we're talking about is a racetrack. They've been very generous about a press pass. So I take my camera and go down the center part of the racetrack. I have more pictures of cars going around in circles than anyone needs.
Hey, let me tell you what. I looked at the pictures up there. They're marvelous. I mean, really marvelous.
Looks great.
All right, boss. All right, 606. I'm going to, I'm going to turn, I'm going to turn the meeting over to this gentleman right here, Tom Murdock. He's chairman of the, of the, this, um, pleasure. Carrie Brown. He's, he's chairman of the committee, so you go ahead and get him started.
All right, thank you. Let's start right off with Linda, Town Clerk Tax Collector.
You want me here?
Sure.
Okay, well, good evening.
Good evening.
I think this will be short and sweet.
Well, short.
Um, I, well, you'll tell me at the end. My two departments are elections and registrations and Town Clerk Tax Collector. This year, for, starting with the elections, this year there is an increase in some of the line items because last year we had two sessions, the deliberative session and then the election. Okay, wait a minute. And then now we're going way out to fiscal year 23. So that would is the deliberative session, the town meeting, and also a primary in September and a general in November. So it goes from two to four. So that's why moderator salary went up. Assistant moderator, supervisors, ballot clerks. Town meeting expense stayed the same. Legal notices, unless the newspaper goes up, that should be outright. Printing ballots, that goes up a little bit. Training, that's in anticipation of the, any of the election people wanting to go to a seminar that has to be paid. Mileage, postage. And meals is a considerable increase. Prior to Dawn Quigley's term, we used to have maybe eight or nine ballot clerks, but not even that many, seven or eight, that worked all day long. Now Dawn has recruited so many people that we go in four-hour shifts and then the shifts overlap from the lunchtime. So you've got some coming in, some going out and back and forth. Plus, we have, with the COVID, I think the, we don't get pizza. We actually get soups and salads and that sort of thing. So that's the increase there. I'll have a better field for it after this year, but then it's too late. So I put in the 1,500. I'll keep going and then I guess ask, ask, you can ask questions after. Did you put the wages in or no? Did she put the?
No.
Did you ask?
I, no, I emailed, I'm sorry. I emailed you and, and Joanne because Julie used to put the salaries in.
Oh, okay.
But you didn't. Okay. So that's, if I'm not mistaken, if you put the two in, the total increase in the town clerk budget was about $6,500 and I will explain why. Okay, so overtime, since Liz is full-time, has been for what, over a year or so now. So she works Monday, Wednesday, Friday in the town clerk's office, Tuesday and Thursday in the finance office. Because she went from part-time to full-time, town clerk's hours sometimes demand more than the normal eight to four, which is more than eight to four. So it creates overtime and I did not, this past year, anticipate how much the overtime would be. So I put in 2,000 for the overtime for the 22, 23, fiscal year 23. I also added back in, a long time ago, we had a third line for assistants or an assistant. I took it out because we just haven't had an assistant. However, I've added it back in because I can't believe in 23, I am anticipating, not positive yet, retiring. If I do retire, there, once we find a second person, because Liz is going to run, so there'll be a new town clerk tax collector. So then there'll be a new person in the office. That new person has to be trained. Training, brand-new person into the office before they can actually work on the window can be anywhere from four to six months, depending on how quickly they catch on to everything. I put in the 4,000. I'm thinking I could, I'll give eight to 10 weeks. Liz will move into my position, then I'll move. So then the new person would be the assistant and then I would move into the deputy. So, and then, so that way either Liz or I can focus on the customers and the other person can focus on training the new person. That would be an ideal situation. If you cut back the money, it'll just be less time training. But ideally, giving eight to 10 weeks would be awesome. Uh, let's see. Lean searches. The gentleman that we used to use retired and we had to search and it's very hard to find companies that will do lean searches. So this person that we did find is a little more expensive, so that's why I put in the 13. It went up 13. But this is an estimate because you don't, you never know how many leans you're looking at placing, so you don't know how many leans are on as to how much the search will cost. So, so that's why I increased a little. Then software, same. Legal notices, same. Dues, same. Training, same. That's, we're hoping we'll be able to go back to, well, Liz was taking a one-week course. She took it two years ago. It's a four-years and then you get your certificate. Well, she went two years ago, I think it was, and hasn't been since because of COVID. So when that starts back up, I can't remember off the top of my head how much it was, but it looks like in 2020, it was probably about 300 to 400 dollars. Training. Oops, wait a minute. Lost my line here. Training mileage. Mileage is driving to and from the bank or sometimes I go up to Conker and pick up, pick up supplies. It's just mileage that's used throughout the year for business. Conference travels, that would be driving to conferences, which we're hoping that we're going to start bringing back up again. Registered redemptions, appears as if the redemptions are, have gone down a little bit. I'm hoping that's because all the leans are paid off. So I lowered it from 700 to 500. Postage increased to 6,500. That's just because of the postage increase this past, what, couple of months ago, plus in another year or two, I wouldn't be surprised if there was another increase. Dog tags, I lowered that because they do run about 250. And office supplies, I kept the same. So the two big differences are increasing the overtime, $1,700, adding the new line item for an assistant, 4,000, and then the 500 postage increase. So if you add it in, the deputy and, and I apologize, I should have double-checked on that. So if you add the deputy and the town clerk's salaries in, I believe it comes to about a $6,500 increase. The finance officer can do her own thing here. Questions?
Everybody else up? Take your questions?
I have questions.
Postage is going up again in December. What's that? Postage is going up again.
Oh, well, so we may go over this year.
In the overtime line, you're explaining why you have that. Do you split that with the selectman's office and Liz has to? So it's split?
Yes, Liz, when she does her timesheet, she does Monday, Wednesday, well, she puts in the town clerk the amount of hours so that she, that would be, what, 24 in the regular hours. And then on the other side, she puts the 24 and, or 16, excuse me, for a week. And then whatever days, whether it be Monday, Wednesday, or Friday, or Tuesday and Thursday, that's where she puts the overtime in.
I see. Okay, all right. And right now, that particular person splits with the selectman's office, so I didn't need dramatic music. So in terms of your, your conversation, in terms of you switching basically with Liz, I'm assuming you're not going to go work in the selectman's office, correct? So we will have to find somebody else to fill that.
Probably, yes. And that's something, yeah, that has to be looked at because the question is, does the new person that comes in do both jobs or do you go back to what used to be?
Okay.
So. I mean, if they needed me, I would do it. I.
Okay. I was just asking.
Yeah, yeah, no, but I would.
So right now, Tuesday, Thursday, she works for the selectman's office. Monday, Wednesday, Friday, she works in the clerk's office.
Correct.
Okay.
So she, really she has.
So she's full-time?
She is full-time.
Yes. So she gets, it's benefited, so she gets benefits.
Yeah.
Because she's full-time. Because they're just.
But then she will be full-time clerk's office, tax clerk's office, and you'll need the other, or you, you're going to basically switch positions for a while.
Right, right. Yeah, I'll switch and then, because you have to have a deputy. And so, I mean, I'm fine with being, actually Penny was my deputy for a while before I found anybody. She wasn't in the office or anything, but I did have a deputy. So it's nice to have somebody that knows what to do with it.
Yes. And maybe that she will, she'll just switch completely and so she'll do that Tuesday, Thursday. Not much retiring.
No, no, that's all right.
And Linda, in terms of, is there still a state law that the town clerk has to be a resident?
Yes.
Does the deputy have to be a resident as well or not?
Um, I would say yes, because if something happened to the town clerk, the deputy becomes a town clerk.
But the assistant doesn't have to be?
Assistant does not have to be.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Everybody all set? Hooray.
Thank you.
You're ready. Is energy?
Energy committee.
Committee is.
You have my mask.
You're ready.
I can put it on if you want. I wrote something up today, but I sent it to you. I don't know.
Oh.
Passed it on to. One copy.
One copy.
Other side of my left upper hand.
Yeah, put it in the middle there or something.
It's not elaborate.
What was your name?
Louis Grandin.
Great. Thank you.
Ow, lame, Lee. So the energy committee is requesting $500 for fiscal year 2023. The committee plans to continue working on present proposals for upgrading the insulation of the safety complex and finding new proposals for upgrades to operating equipment. Just for an update, I did, can I talk about other stuff besides budget stuff? Okay, I, I spoke to Bill Newell, the guy who did the audit of the roof and who is, is working on a new proposal. He sent it to the co-op and he says he's still waiting for the co-op. So it's been a couple of months, so I'm wondering if there's something else happening, but I don't know. So hopefully something will happen with that. And I plan on calling Tim McDonald about the upgrades on the equipment. And I thought I heard that you had some HVAC people come in and do some estimates on, or something?
It's done.
It's done? Okay.
HVAC. Steve came in tonight and showed the company to do the HVAC.
Oh, okay. All right. I wasn't current about that. All right. Other things we want to do is search for other savings with the town. We plan on having regular meetings again, so we're going to continue to look for anything we can find that will save money and do any energy upgrades. Some people have suggested that an electric vehicle charging station be installed on town property. The, the New Hampshire Electric Co-op has up to $2,500 in rebates for that. And depending on the kind of charger and where you put it. For instance, I put mine on the wall of my house and I did it myself. Cost me $500. So the, the unit itself is not that much. It would be the electrician. And if you have, if you have to tunnel under the ground for the wire and have a stand-up station, that's going to be more expensive. And then, of course, the electrician. So, but I'm assuming if it was $5,000, we would get 2,500 from the co-op. So that'd be pretty reasonable, I think. And we would still like to do an outreach program again next spring, maybe in June. This weekend, we, we had our meet and greet, solar and EV meet and greet. I thought it went pretty well. It was a lot of fun. Wasn't a huge amount of people, maybe 25 to 30. But we were, we were pretty busy. I mean, everybody was really talking energy the whole time. I was totally busy talking about electric vehicles. We had four Chevy Bolts, a Kona, Hyundai Kona, and Tesla. And then we had two people, two people from Revision who were answering questions. We had two volunteers who were talking about solar. That was Dean Rubine and Jim Banks. And it was, it was a nice event. It was a nice event. And some people seemed interested. And so in the spring, it would be nice to do something even bigger, possibly with music. Saturday would have been a great day, but a lot of the people I called were already busy that day. So this time, now I'll have a lot more time to get ready. So that's it. $500 to add to what we already have. I think would kind of get us a long way. Any other questions?
Lou, a couple things. First, now in favor, obviously, for the electric vehicle, town charging station, I don't think we have anything even close, even in the Market Basket Lot or anywhere that gives us a charging station.
Right.
For public use. So I think that's, I think it's a very good idea and I think it should be pursued. And if you can get a good quote on what, what it's going to cost, what the finances would be and bring it to the board.
Well, I know that Revision installs them. I could call them.
Does he have to get something in writing that says, here's what it's going to take to install it? That's with the electrician or whatever?
I did notice that most libraries have one, a charging station.
Where you put it, where's the right place to put it?
Right.
I mean, that's what I, I think that would be, be a good place, certainly. Town Hall would be a good place. They've got a lot of activity. I think the library probably gets a little bit more on the day-to-day basis.
Oh, yeah, the town hall is next door, so.
Anyway, we can get it priced and bring it to the board and then we can take a look at it. The, the thing that I feel is a little short. I didn't hear a lot of talk about, at one time, I'm going to say a year ago, maybe two years ago, the energy committee was really pursuing a solar array out around the transfer station or somewhere. Are you still going to do that or have you given up that project or?
Well, here are my thoughts. We've had three proposals, solar proposals. The first one was on the roof and turns out wasn't actually the best place. And then the next proposal was for the roof of the transfer station. And the problem with that one was that the way, the way that it works is, is what you use on a particular building comes right off your bill 100%. But if you have any excess, you get reimbursed at what they call the net metering rate, which is about 73%. And since most of the power that we use between the two buildings was actually here, so most of the, most of the power from the array was going to be net metered to this building. So it was like at a reduced profit. Now, what happened this summer is they, there was a bill in the state legislature that passed that brought the net metering ceiling up for municipalities from 1 megawatt to 5 megawatts, which means that we might be able to combine meters into one meter. So in other words, if we did have a large array, it would cover, it would cover the cost of both buildings much better. And so I did ask, when I was calling Revision to come to our meet and greet, I did ask about that. And I was told that they're still not totally clear on the implications of the bill and that he was going to get back to me. So that's something I definitely would like to pursue.
Are we on the same power source that transportation here? Are we on different ones?
Yeah, the co-op is transfer station and here.
Oh, okay.
And I believe also that the, the building next to the church.
The parish house is.
Parish house is also co-op.
The other is.
Yeah. And someone also suggested to run up, run, since the parish house is on the co-op, run a line from the parish house to some other buildings, but that's, you know, that's just, just a suggestion. But, so I don't think it would be real hard for Revision to just plug in some numbers for their original design on the transfer station roof. And I don't think that roof is as much of a problem since it's a metal roof. And just the, the way that it's built, the transfer, transfer station is really open, so I don't think fire is, is, is a big concern. And since, since the first proposal in 2017, solar arrays are up, required to automatically turn off if there's a fire. So.
Last question. How many people on the committee and whom are they?
It's myself, Barb, Barbara Wacop, Mary Woodver, and I think we might have one new member that we, we met at the, at Fair. So we're trying, I might be able to. So we're trying, I might be able to rope somebody else in, hopefully.
Well, thank you.
So, yeah, well, thanks for asking about that. Anyone else?
All set.
Thank you very much.
Tom, I was just saying.
Sustainability.
That's the total with the two salaries.
Oh, okay.
Just so if you were curious.
Thank you.
I'll wear my mask, my glasses, fuck up. Without my glasses, I can't see the content.
Kinda happens, Dad.
It does happen. Relationship between the two. Paul Gazowski, Chair of the Sustainability Committee. I assume that you received our information and on Friday, Monday morning, I sent a letter regarding a separate matter. Okay, so you have all that information, that's good. So I'll start with the budget and this current fiscal year, which we're only a couple of months into. Last year, we received the $1,000. This is such an odd thing to say, we've spent nothing thus far. So on the back of the sheet that I provided to you, I broke down what I think might happen with that money through the rest of this fiscal year. So to date, zero expenditures. We can anticipate maybe $600 of expenditures. That's contingent upon whether the Ad Commission and the library sponsor the backyard farming initiative. And I'm not quite sure what might happen with that. But in the past, we used to pick up the full rental for the Grange, which was $100 each session. But we split that in the past, most recently. And so, $300 there. We just started Lee's Trees. We award prizes for that, local crafts, to the winners of Lee's Trees. And there'll be an expenditure, probably around $100. We are in the process of developing a directory for artisans and cottage industries in Lee. Even though that will be a digital product and there won't, I don't anticipate there'll be expenses with that end of it. There'll be some print support for that to make people aware of it. And since we're into municipal composting and things like that with other partners, there's a possibility that some travel might be involved with that. So we anticipate $600 of expenditures. So we met and discussed what we should request and will come back and request the $1,000 again, even though we're not expending a lot. There's a lot of uncertainty with the pandemic and how we can operate programs. But the breakdown is similar to what we requested last year for reboard endorsements for office supplies and mailing, $100. Most of what we do involves outreach programs and education. So we anticipate $750 for that. Some of it might be for rentals or overhead for community programs, the backyard farming initiative, for example. Or printing flyers for distribution beyond what we have. We can print for free with the town. If you do something more robust, it will involve a little bit. And then, some money available for conferences or communication or travel if we do that. Programs, there are four of us on the committee still. Me and Chuck Cox, Dean Rubine, and Jen Messiter. And we could use a few additional bodies. We tried to do a lot for four people. So ongoing drought awareness, which isn't a concern now, that was a few months ago. There isn't any expense with that, but we can kind of keep a pulse on that. And working, you know, with Denise, we kind of share the responsibility of keeping people informed. The Use Less Campaign, we ran a while back. We may get back to that. Backyard farming initiative is on hold. We are rather deeply involved in municipal composting, partnering with UNH, the Town of Durham, and the school district. It's not entirely clear what the next step is on their end, okay? With that group that we've been part of. So I think they're trying to resolve how they want to proceed. On our end, Steve has been working on this and we've been lending support to him. And I think that will continue. Whether something develops where, for example, Steve wrote us a couple of weeks ago that the new rules are coming down. And Steve is part of an advisory group for the state. He sits on that group. So he has asked us to review the draft rules and kind of weigh in on that. Whether we end up kind of going on our own, which is still a possibility, or partnering with the UNH and the other local communities is unclear. So that's kind of something that will resolve itself. Again, the Cottage Industry Directory will, hopefully, if we can cross a few legal boundaries, will come out this year. We've been working on it. And then, Lee's Trees, we're in the midst of. Now that will sunset at the end of this year, so. That's it. So we're kind of holding to that, even though we don't have, we have pitiful documentation to show that we actually spent, we received. But we're hopeful. And, you know, from our perspective, we're a committee and we think that if we have a need for funds, they should be available. And we shouldn't have to go scrambling if something comes up, so. I think the best thing to do is take questions on that and then we can talk about the other topic, which in and of itself may involve money.
Paul, I guess I'd like to, the Use Less Campaign is the one hall that you had at Mastway School when we gathered and did some instruction on repairing and they did some. I thought, I know that you were disappointed in the turnout. You know, it wasn't as many as I expected also, but I thought it was very, very good.
Yeah, it was a good day.
It was a very good day. So I'd really like to see that happen again. And participate in that because it was excellent.
It would be, it would be on front and center on our radar screen. A pandemic would just kind of like ease up a little bit. Because that's an in-person thing and it's an inside thing. Even if it's in a gymnasium, we have to kind of watch. So it's there and, you know, if we can't do that indoors, we probably could do it outdoors when the weather is more favorable. The other part of that campaign hasn't really developed yet. That's, there's just an outright education campaign to get people, I'm sorry, to get people to make better choices about what they buy and whether they actually need it and what the benefits are of buying local. So it's all interconnected. So we do have bigger plans for that, so. Thanks, Trin. Other questions? Okay, well, you know, do what you will. And the other topic, which we've talked about several times at our meetings, is the topic of how do we handle our data? Not that it's a huge amount. And how do we handle our programs and how do we handle our emails and such? So let me describe what we currently have. As Chair of the committee, I have, I don't know how many committees and commissions have this, but I have an email address that's hooked into the Microsoft Outlook program, okay? And that's our official email address, sustain@leanh.org. So we requested that and Julie was able to kind of set it up for us. Takes a little maneuvering, I'm the other one who has access to it, you know, on our committee. But the town has free access to it anytime and it's just right there for them, okay? So it's all in one place. So that's, I think that's piece number one. I think that's like a smart thing to do for committees to have their own email addresses and to kind of formalize that and get everybody together using the same product. That leads to part two. So I've chaired this committee for four years and virtually all our information resides on my Mac Pro. Now, the good side to that is I know where it is. One of the negatives is I'm not the best at like archiving and organizing, okay? The problem is that if you need to go fetch it, and technically, anything we do, any product of our committee is owned by the town. And so it kind of comes back to you, I don't own it. There's a problem with that. It resides on my computer, which has other personal information on it, okay? So if we got to a point where basically you needed information from my computer, well, I'm not gonna walk further down that road. You know, but it is a sensitive topic. Personally, I'd rather see that information, yeah, it can, a backup can stay on my computer, but to tell you the truth, it should reside somewhere in town. And there are hurdles to gather there. I mean, I think, obviously, our data and our product isn't nearly as sensitive as most of what you deal with in town. So it should reside in the same place, but it should reside somewhere. This is one committee of 20-some committees, okay? Technically, everybody's all over the place. If you sat them all down and said, "How do you do it?", you'd get all kinds of answers in terms of how you do it. So the proposal is, and the hope is that we'll start to try to bring this together and aggregate it into something that has a better form to it. Something that you, as the governing body, can follow. Something that when a member of the public wants to know something, we are scrambling to find it, you know, it'll be right there. So we're hopeful that that a group might, the governing body might consider that it's time to try this and that in this budget cycle, which would run from, as you all know, from next July to the following June 30th, which is like over a year and a half out, that there would be some money available to perhaps line it up. So whether you set up parallel servers or whether, you know, I do know this, that what we're working with is a Microsoft environment. What we work with mostly as a committee is a Google environment. And so there are a number of options out there for how to get at this in a number of ranges in terms of how to price it. So it would require, I know that you can't solve this overnight, so, but as you go through the budget cycle, hey, if you think this is important at all, don't forget about this, okay? You know, even if it's tied up with the $1,000 that this committee is requesting, yeah, don't forget about it. And maybe what needs to happen here is a group needs to be formed to start working at it. Our committee's working at it. We're taking a look at the options. And we have written a few things up and, you know, we'll share them with you as we develop it. But it shouldn't just be us. So brought that here because I thought, our committee thought this is the place to start and Trin's been with us and we have talked about this. She's the Select Board Rep for our committee. And so I'll take questions on that one, or reactions.
Good idea.
Does anyone else, there's any?
Oh, sorry.
Are there any line items for storage, like off-site storage right now? Like, does the town clerk or anybody else house anything outside of the buildings that we have?
I don't think so.
Okay. But we did, when I was on the late TCBC, and we dedicated a lot of storage, a lot of space in a new building towards storage, which just seemed completely silly to me. Like, why on earth are we doing that when everything could fit in this much space? And that space you have to build, that has demands of roofs, that you have to heat, that you have to maintain forever and ever. Just seems silly when it fits onto, it would fit on a hard drive or you could set on a shelf. Or in the case of going with a Google or Microsoft option, it would be on someone else's server who's probably much more competent at maintaining data than anybody in the Town of Lee is gonna be because they have multiple facilities all over the place. I mean, right now, it's a case that if a building burned down, it's just gone, right? And we're talking like decades of records gone. So on one end, we can make photocopies. Seems a little silly. On the other hand, we can scan everything, put it on Drive, or, you know, upload it to some cloud service. Google and Microsoft both have programs for government and should take care of all the compliance issues. If we use one of those, they have programs that should align with the RSAs.
The other thing that's happened with a number of committees and commissions, so, you know, in the manner that Facebook has become something that's being adopted in town, committees and commissions have done that. We have, beyond that, we have our own Blogspot Drive. So we have material that's posted by the town, but we have a website that is external to the town that is a little bit more easily accessed by us. And the Facebook page, which we monitor and such. So, yeah, I share, I share those thoughts, for sure.
The only thing I was gonna ask before was, and they know a lot more about it, but I was thinking, this isn't as similar to what you were just doing with all of our information? That we could just?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, so.
We created a Google Drive and we're sharing documents for the ABC Committee on our Google Drive. So we're doing exactly what you were talking about.
Pretty much exactly what you were just talking about, right?
Only a tiny little microcosm for our committee.
Right, and this is the way we work. We, basically, we meet, we become legal with our work. And it goes on a Google Drive and we can continue to work on it as long as we're not crafting decisions. I hope I understand right to now. You know, so we kind of work within the Google Drive environment and get a lot done that way, too.
Couldn't you adapt something and have it actually officially set up for the committees on a Google Drive?
Yeah.
Through the town, you know, for all the committees?
Yeah, Google has municipal services, so.
So that's something that.
I know, but my service.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, the players are Microsoft and Google and there are others out there. And you have Back Bay doing work for you, whether on a retainer or whatever it is. So I think all those options need to be examined, explored.
I was at a Select Board meeting earlier this year. There was a discussion that Stratford County Regional Planning is investigating and providing scanning services for.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Hello.
Cool. They just.
Have you, can you?
I've been trying to get more information.
There wasn't much information at that meeting.
No, and I've been trying to get updates from the women that's running it and I haven't had much luck.
They've been flooded, so I've been going to the meetings ever since and they've been flooded with requests. So it's something we have to think about, you know, we could do that. We'd have to pay that.
Reasons of all sorts of, we had solar issues.
Right, we would have, we would have to send the $6,000, but then it would be, I think it was like $20,000 or $30,000 worth of work. So we're just waiting on some details.
But a good strategy for this could be that you just decide going forward. Everything should be in a central place. And the scanning can happen.
Whenever.
You know, a little bit at a time. But to make the scanning like, well, we'll be electronic. But to make the scanning like, well, we'll be electronic after we scan the entire archive is like, that's quite a barrier, right? So what is the, what's, where's the line item that we can find whatever the current town server costs us? What is that in the budget right now? Or is that broken up between multiple offices?
Is town server?
There's a thing chucked on the wall inside town hall. There was, that I thought it was a server that we kept things on.
IT line item on the town, the town side.
Is that, is that under selectmen's office?
No, it's under, there's, there's a separate, separate section for it.
Was it just under town administration?
So, Corneers saying that a line item might exist already?
I'm just wondering, I'm just looking at it because I'm guessing that we can, if we were to switch to a cloud-based platform, then we could get rid of maybe some line item that's a server sitting in a closet somewhere right now. And then I would think it would be a cost neutral thing because maintaining your own machines physically, and this is why most companies have moved to it, because it's, it's more costly and then you've got to pay some nerd to come in and check on everything. And you can just outsource it completely and it's all available via the internet.
We'd have to see because there's applications running on. I'm not sure Tyler, Tyler, I don't think is somewhere as a service yet.
We were, we don't, Tyler does not, we don't go through Tyler forever.
So it sits on our server?
Right.
Yeah, so.
So there's like accounting stuff that's there and other things like that, yeah, that can't be moved?
So the towns that are having trouble with being hacked are those ones that are on Google and stuff or on their own server?
I think that's the right question.
I'm not sure.
That's a good question.
People like that.
Peterborough was one of them, so I don't know.
We should find that out first.
Well, I think it's, it warrants research.
So that's part of what we're looking for.
Yeah, it warrants research. The only thing is wherever this particular thing is, the public has to have access to it. So maybe the committees have, read write, but then a public person could come in and just see what they're doing because they're all public documents. So we can't restrict them to say, you know, only the sustainability committee can see them, anybody can see them. But just maybe sustainability committee can update and add new ones and change things.
I think that's what he's suggesting too, is that, is that right now there's those things, but then once it's actually been talked about in the meeting, then they go up there.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Lots of stuff, good stuff that we can, yeah, we can do and the board can consider and so forth. All right, any other questions for, for?
Nope.
All right.
We'll keep you free.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Juan.
Thank you.
The library, there we are again. So just a couple of highlights before I actually take a look at the budget we've submitted. None of us ever thought COVID would last this long and would have this kind of an impact in what we've done. The library, of course, is included in that. I think we've done very well, given circumstances. COVID shut down the library literally in March 2020, 13, 14, somewhere around there. We were closed completely to the public. We told everyone, hold your books, we'll wait and see what's going to happen next. So about three months later, we reopened our doors on June 22nd, so just before the fiscal year started in earnest again. So we reopened to almost exactly the same hours, reduced by about two hours a week. So we're open 41 hours a week, but with limitations. You can only stay 15 minutes. We could only have 10 people in the library at any given time plus staff. It was different. We saw a few phases, but we also instituted curbside pickup, which was enthusiastically embraced by the public. The interesting thing, we do have quite a few people that come in to use the computers and that was really a difficult thing that we said, okay, if you're going to use a computer, you could stay for 30 minutes where we told patrons 15 minutes, 10 to 15 minutes to try and finish, you know, what you're looking for. We did a lot of curbside service. We increased our home visits. We are still maintaining home visits and we still have a handful of people that still are not comfortable coming into the library. So we did that. Of course, our interlibrary loan where we borrowed from the 200 libraries in New Hampshire, that shut down completely, didn't restart until September 22nd. So we had a good four months that limited to our collection. We really do enjoy being part of New Hampshire-wide library system that we can borrow from those libraries, but we were reduced to just our collection, which was good. We talked with Durham, we talked with Madbury. Since we share a school system, we also share programming. I was doing a weekly drive to those libraries to do some limited interlibrary loan between the three libraries. I managed to get our catalogs so that you could search all three catalogs. It's all on our website. It's really kind of cool that we did that really on a small basis, but it, we had, we had an impact and people in Madbury say, all right, you can now get John Sanford because the library has a huge collection of John Sanford. They had a couple of patrons who loved him, you know. So it was wonderful situation that we were sharing and all getting along as well as we could. The other impact it had is that we immediately went to remote library ship. Our children's librarian Judy jumped right in, started doing storytimes online, started reading chapter books online, chapter at a time, could hear her in the back recording. We discovered really soon into that process that we didn't have enough bandwidth to really keep, keep that up sustaining. The friends of the library did purchase a Chromebook for the children's librarian so that she could, at least in a Chromebook world, record some things, put them up on Facebook. So because we didn't have the bandwidth, we started talking to Chrome, Chromecast, Comcast for our carrier and they were giving us a free internet access, but it was extremely slow. 35 over 5, yeah, which really wasn't conducive for uploading virtual things or running Zoom programs. It really wasn't beefed up enough. So we talked with them, we finally found a package, we increased that to 200 over 20. But what that also meant was our phone bill went up because we had a phone line that we were paying for every month. Now it's phone and the internet combined, so that increased, we increased our bandwidth by 400%, which helps with the streaming, but, you know, it's not perfect yet, but it's a lot better than it was. So that was part of what we did through the year. We did a lot of remote work, you know, for the first three months that we were closed to the public and then we opened up, so limited access. The circulation was wonderful. Yes, we'd lost circulation from past years, but the really interesting thing, our circulation from, over the past few years, only decreased by 15%. Our foot traffic, those coming in, decreased by 60%. So we didn't have people coming in, but they were maintaining circulation. So we were doing curbside like crazy. I bought a special cart that we'd roll out when the weather was nice. It was outside on the cart. When the weather was not so nice, you had to open the door and you'd reach your hand in and grab something off the cart, you know, back away slowly. So I thought that was really, you know, the people in Lee, they're borrowing, they really are using the library. We only lost 50% of circulation on average. Streaming, uploading, borrowing things through our Overdrive app, that has had a steady increase from the day we started it in 2008 to today of averaging 9% increase every year. We certainly saw that again this year because people were doing a lot more things remotely. In connection with that, an interesting statistic, even though they were doing a lot more, working remotely, our DVD collection had fantastic circulation before COVID, went down during COVID because people were online all the time. I don't want to sit and watch a movie when I've been online all day. So that was just an interesting thing, that DVD circulation went down, but our Overdrive and our streaming services went up and continued to go up. So all that being said, we did, I can give you a little bit about our budget then. Because we had to increase our bandwidth, we had, you know, that comes with a cost. I was currently paying $60 a month telephone, nothing for internet because it was the free service that Comcast offers municipalities, very slow. So we had to increase that. That came, yeah, it gave us a great increase in bandwidth, but it also increased the monthly fees. So we went from $60 a month for just telephone to 189 a month for telephone and internet, but a faster service. We introduced a streaming service that has called Hoopla, that has movies, television, music, audiobooks and ebooks on it. We just started that in December, that's getting really good reviews. People are liking what they have to see there. So that is increasing even while our physical DVD collection circulation has gone down. We also increased our digital content capability, increased our commitment to our e-reader services, which is Overdrive and Hoopla. So that's a couple of things we did. But what we're asking for budget-wise is that we're level funded from this current year to the next year. The second page on our operations budget does show you what we do with this quarterly, the quarterly amount. We have taken out from the budget, we've reduced in our print line items and our non-print, which are physical CDs, DVD collection. We've limited, we've reduced those in order to help beef up the digital content we're trying to increase and also to help offset the cost of the telephone internet access. So we're asking for a level funded budget and I know there was some confusion last year as to what we actually do with this money, but here it is. The operation budget page, which you should have all conceived, shows what line items we have, so the fixed costs of utilities. Things paid by the town are key and the property liability insurance are paid. So we're asking for $46,800 for our operations budget. That's the town quarterly payment request. What we are looking for is to increase our personnel budget. We like to, we have some fixed, fixed costs, you know, for benefits and those kinds of things. Right now, we only have two full-time employees that are getting benefits. Because I am retiring in 45 days, nobody's counting. Whoever comes into my position is a full-time position with benefits. Right now, I don't carry town benefits, so that's a cost increase and that's a fixed cost. You won't know what that actual cost is until the new person is hired and whatever their needs are in terms of benefits. And that really does fluctuate a lot depending on whether they take a family plan or a two-person plan or a buyout like I do, those kinds of things. So we're proposing that we increase our current library staff's wages by 10%. We all know it's very difficult hiring right now when places are offering incentives, 1,200, 1,500, 4,000 for sign-on bonus. We can't really compete with that. So we're looking to increase our current three positions, not the library director's position, but the other three staff members that we have. And that overall impact is about $8,000 in line item for personnel. And again, the summary, show the fixed ancillary, I think that's personnel resource, something like that, whatever that PR stands for. So that's a fixed increase that would be there if you had the, the new director, whatever their ancillary costs were for benefits and then the hourly wages. And if you raise wages, then the fixed cost also decreased because you've got taxes and Medicare and social security, those little things that are in there. So the next page is our salary proposal. We're not looking to increase any hours anywhere. We want to leave the hours the same as what they are, but with a 10% increase in personnel costs. Our revenue support, we're not a revenue generating department, so we don't really look to get revenue, but we do make some revenue over, over the year. And what we expect we might be able to get is the same, I just put in the same thing for this next year is what we're hoping that we will get this year. We do have a copy machine. It does a lot of scanning. We talk about scanning documents. We don't charge for people to scan documents, so, but we would charge if they print something because there's paper and toner costs. That's minimal. Like fiscal year '21, we only got $339, but we were pretty much closed during, for pandemic or limited hours, limited access. Where the year before, we made $600 a copier. That changes some years. The church has a lot of copying. We come and let them do things pretty much at cost, but it's, it's a cost. So we're not looking that we're going to be raising a whole lot of revenue, but what little there is, we're hoping we might see that. There is a financial report to show what, where our money just came and went last year. Kind of self-explanatory. And we do have support from the Friends of the Library and that this last year was $1,350. A big bulk of that museum passes, $1,500. Because of pandemic, most of the museums actually extended their memberships because they were completely closed, so we couldn't send people in. So a lot of those museums are, actually, most of them all increased the time. So they didn't, the Friends didn't spend as much. It's usually around $3,000 a year for the museum passes. And then they also in turn helped to support our children's programs. Right now, Durham Library and Madbury Library are not doing any in-library programming, so they're planning a bunch of remote virtual programs for kids. We did a bunch of them in the summertime, summer reading program, although it was very successful for what it was, was all outside. Durham and Madbury had no inside, we didn't have any inside, we still haven't had any inside programs. We got planning when the weather gets bad, like today, we were outside after school and getting darker and darker and darker. Little Judy, she needs to get a headlamp so she can read books as long as it's going to be outside. But it's winter, you know, things, it's going to get darker sooner. Kids don't get off the bus till almost 4 o'clock. Masked weight, it takes them 20 minutes to get to the library. I don't know where they're taking them. Driving around Lee, a bus full of kids. But, you know, they get out at 3:40 and they don't arrive to the library till about three minutes before. So there is that. We will be doing more, oh, we did, we did do with the Historic Society and the library, we had virtual programs that were very successful. Those January through May, we're planning another batch, should be starting in next week.
13?
Yep, and I have a Spark Joy program next Wednesday, next Wednesday. So that's, virtual programs really is the name of the game. If we get a chance to move into town hall to have some of our, the old town hall, to have some of our programs, might be really good. But our tents are there. When the snow starts falling, we got to take the tents down and we've cleared out our basement as well as we can. So right in there. I think that's all I had. Did anyone have anything they wanted to add? Covered it all. Any questions?
So, yes. Couple times in there, you said you were going to retire, you were going to retire.
I know, I know. It was a moving target.
So, I mean, but are you truly going to retire?
I am.
Really?
Absolutely. One guy pays for today.
Well, then, I want, I want to say that you've done a great job.
Thank you. Truly enjoyed my years.
Personally, I love our library and it does, it does, it's just wonderful. I think it's the keystone for the town personally, but I want to thank you for everything you've done because it's been very.
It's my pleasure. Really have enjoyed the six years I've been here. It'll be six and a half, so, yeah. When all is said and done, thank you.
I want to second that. I also just want to say thank you for getting us all through this pandemic and it always you did. I can't tell you how many times.
We're not done yet.
I know, there's more that we want to go, but there's so many times that I and my family and all of us really appreciate the best. I just really appreciate the hard work everyone did to do the best they could to get.
Thank you.
Well, the two select people beat me to it because I was going to say the same exact thing. So thank you very much.
Come up with something unique now.
And you've added so much to the community and it's a loss that you're leaving. So one thing I would like to ask you to do, which we've got some new members, could you introduce your trustees to us?
From the left, Deborah Shanda. From the left, Deborah Shanda, she is the treasurer this year. Katrina Pellicia, former treasurer. Peg is behind her, Peg Dolan, she's the alternate. Emily Woodhall is new this year, really happy to have her. And Annie Gazowski is our chair.
Thank you.
Getting back to your, your comment about the online access. Did you find that the library had a role for kids that were trying to learn virtually that didn't have good access at home? Did you have kids coming in the library to use their services?
We didn't, simply because we had to limit the time that they were in there.
You were approached about ones that didn't have.
No, but our wireless is accessible throughout most of the parking lot. So we do tell people and we do have people that sit in their cars after hours and utilize the wifi.
Interesting.
And it actually reaches, I think, a little bit further now. It used to go about as far as the telephone pole that's outside of the annex. You know, like right in the middle there. I did a virtual, how to search ancestry, did a genealogy class. As a result, we saw that usage in that database increased tremendously and that's still available remotely.
Don't we have that Comcast contract coming right up to?
Yes, the next meeting.
Public carrying is like for 18. Yeah.
Maybe that can be like at least the minimum that we ask for them is get them even better wifi.
Wow, that would be resounding.
$180, that's ridiculous.
But that, that was the reality, I said.
And that's not even a fast speed.
No, no.
It should be gig speed there.
I agree. Yeah, because we still can't, I mean Judy can't go downstairs in the program room and, and record things because she can't upload it. She just loses the signal, no matter, we tried boosters, we tried, you know.
And a number of different devices.
And number of devices. Coming down with my phone and it's racing like crazy, look at that bandwidth. And then you turn on the Chromebooks like.
Just have a mesh network and get them better service.
That would be wonderful. Anything you want to do next week?
We all have to go and see about that meeting.
See if we can get something. Because they were giving us their, their free service and they said, is there any way you just give us faster service for free?
Yeah.
But I queried other libraries, you know, it's a similar cost, but you're really, you're right. It should not be that slow, even though it's yards faster than what it was.
Gig speed service that do all your streaming.
I think I covered all my fun stuff. Weekly crafts, 4,166 crafts were given out last fiscal year. On a weekly basis, we were doing crafts and giving out little craft programs. We just stopped this month, October, we said, no more weekly because we've got regular weekly programs.
Are you still doing curbside at home?
We are still doing curbside and at home, yes.
Do you see that continuing into the future? There's some of these things from the pandemic, which is going to be part of life.
Yeah, I think so.
We have, we had prior to pandemic, we had about three people that regularly received home visits. We now have about six, but we expect once things get better that half of those will start coming back. But we know, you know, they're, they're compromised, system compromised, it's just reasons that they just can't come into the library. Our, our adult book group who met remotely, starting last May, so we met remotely every week, every month, every month. I said, okay, it's September, we're open, you know, we're going to have adult book group at the library. And I still have people that don't feel comfortable doing that. So we're now going to be doing both, zooming and in-person. And we did it last month, we set up the Chromebook to, but I'm looking to get a grant from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation to get maybe an owl that would allow us to do some, a hybrid of some sort. We'll see. But yeah, if we could get a, a bandwidth, anything would help.
Can you talk a little about the consulting fees and what you plan on spending that on? What kind of consulting might you need?
We haven't used consulting fees in the last couple of years, but since we're hoping to add on to the library, make or do some renovations, getting some consultants to come in and help with that. I think they have used them in the past, but just not the years that I've been here. So we have the line item there. Usually when we end up not spending it, it goes to buy materials. Of course, this year now it goes to spend paper, telephone and internet.
Anybody else, are you all set? All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I make a request after the ABC meeting this night? Could I ask the library director and the trustees to stay for just a few minutes?
Tonight, right now?
Yes, I have a Selectman business to deal with. If that's okay, if we're done.
I'm sorry, what was your request?
I requested that the library director and the trustees wait around for a few minutes until after the ABC meeting.
Are ABC members all set? Any questions? Everything's good?
No questions.
All right, I'm going to turn the meeting back over to Chair and get it done. Very well.
The thing I wanted to talk about since the library trustees are here. We got the report back for the town hall in terms of the hazardous materials. I would like us to consider allowing the library to use the town hall based on what we saw in that particular report, but only the downstairs, not the upstairs.
That's all we want, yes.
So I would like the board consider that. If too unamenable, I would like that to proceed.
I think it's fine, good idea.
Okay. But can Denise, I'm sorry, we can't ask Denise. I want to see if maybe Bill or Kristen can do some cleanup in there. It needs to have a, a good clean. So if you could ask one of them to. So if you can work with the, the people.
Can you get, can you get me a key? Yes. I just remembered my code the other day.
And right now it's just the library that's allowed.
Just, just the library. So if you guys want to work with Bill and Kristen to find out when they can finish cleaning, because it does need a good clean.
Yeah.
And then you can start planning to use that facility so that kids don't have to be outside in the dark with the, Judy with the light on. Yeah, they will do.
That's the town clerk's office.
Yeah, so you can go in through the back door, through the hallway and use the big room, but don't go upstairs and don't use the town clerk's office.
Yeah, there is, you know, there is an issue that we have to, that they have to pay attention to, which is the lead paint issue that we've just.
But those areas.
Second floor.
Those are upstairs if people.
Yeah, second floor is what the, the thing is and also the tiles in the, the town clerk's office. So those are the two things we're concerned about.
Don't rip up the carpet and lick the floors.
There'll be writing somewhere, that'd be great.
If you guys are amenable to those conditions, you have my permission and it sounds like the board's permission to use that facility for your program.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you. Good news.
And lastly, I might to make a request to Bill and Kristen, if you could pass that on, for subsequent meetings of the ABC and the board, could you have sufficient tables so all the members can sit at the same table, same place?
You mean make this certain, do you want to?
Yeah, if you can, there's another table that Bill or Kristen can put up so that everybody's.
So you don't feel like you're at the kids' table?
I like being at the kids'.
Yes, but I get more work out of you when you come to the adults' table. Other than that, I'm good.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, sir.